Alderman Persson?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Here.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Here.
Alderman Tudor?
Here.
Alderman Studer? Mayor Orin, live at forum. I constantly approve the minutes on September 15th, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, we give the minutes and on no errors, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented in place of.
I second that. And much about the Studer, secondly, Alderman Kirby Hall, any further discussion? No call both of you. Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persson?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes. You. Mayor's important to do things. First off, I'd like to make my condolences to Alderman Studer, and personally, I'm publicly with his family, the hospital, and all of his family. And also, I'd like to extend our condolences to Joe Triner and his family, to the family of Joe Triner, who he helped, Triner's been part of home since first summer years, was actually an alderman, from 95 to 99, his condolences to his family as well. Also need to make note that, just sort of by notice, about Pete Rambo, who's not the place commissioner, so Henry's resignation is lieutenant now, so he's up for replacement for Pete, so we've got a couple people in the council. Somebody's worried that I should have a name for you guys for next council meeting. Actually, before then, I'll give it to you guys. All right, also trick or treat hours, that we come up with, October 31st, Halloween, four o'clock to seven o'clock, PM. The Wilt County Gladius household hazardous waste, hazardous waste and electronic drop-off command is scheduled for October 24th, from eight o'clock to three o'clock, here at the City Hall, if you have any old electronics, hazardous waste, neighbors, friends, family, bring it here, and they gladly take it. And lastly, always the fun part, we have our presentation, again this year, purposefully, or two thousand fifteen.
Thank you very much.
All of you, take your way.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Lori Popeye, representing MAC and Associates, we performed the audit this year, but I still am in April Clarion. If you don't mind, I'll just stay seated here, go ahead and pull out your reading report. Any questions that you have throughout the presentation, please don't forget to just stop and ask a question at any time in the presentation. We'll go ahead and start with page one. Page one is the independent audit report, we issued our opinion on the financial statements here at the city, and we found no issues, so we issued a clean opinion, an unqualified opinion here, and that's basically what all of this two-page report says, is that you had a clean opinion and you're on it. We've had no issue with financial statements, and working with the personnel here in the city, including, you know, especially Kim, we were able to get everything very tightly, and had no issues there whatsoever. We'll go ahead and start with the basic financial statement section, which begets on page three. The first two statements are government-wide statements. The difference in what you're looking at here versus what you're normally seeing on a month-to-month basis, is the inclusion of capital assets and debt. So here, we're looking at totals, on the right-hand columns, we have total assets of 38.1 million, down about 450,000 from the prior year. We have total liabilities at 12.3 million, down from 13.1 million. And we have a total net position at the end of the year of 25,767,000. This is inclusive of both the governmental activity funds and the business type, meaning the water sewer. The next page is the course fund.
When it goes down, is that just basically based on the sense of valuation and down down the property, or?
No. No, the net position is actually the position that you have available, so what the fund, almost the fund balances that you have available. Now, the way it differs from government-wide to the fund financial statements, is the inclusion of the capital assets and the depreciation on those. And because what you're normally seeing on a fund financial is, you buy a piece of equipment, it's entirely expensed when you bought it. The government-wide statement shows depreciation, so what you're looking at is a listing of your fixed assets, and you're depreciating them over the life of those assets. Same with the debt, the principal and interest on your fund financial statements are all expense. But when you're looking at a government-wide statement, you're looking at the liability that's due over time. And the reason of this is an inclusion in these reports, and it has been, I would say for the past, this has happened about, yeah, 10 years ago, this Gatsby 34, required us to put these statements in the front, so that you can see how the city would perform as if it were accounted for as a private entity instead of public. So total net position means, this is what you have, your assets, including fixed assets, minus your liabilities, giving the debt payments that you have in these short-term liability, like payroll deposits, do that type of thing. So you're looking at 25.7 million, which is an increase from the prior year. Okay? Statement B is the corresponding government-wide statement, this is an income statement, if you will. So we'll look at the totals, the total primary government had the expenditures of 8.4 million, we had total general revenues there of 4.2 million. We had different charges for fees and services, operating grants of about 4.3 million. So overall, we're looking at a total increase in that position of 330,000, again, net position at the end of the year of 25.767 million. Statement C is a fund financial statement. So this is what you're used to looking at, looking at for fund balance purposes. You're looking at cash and cash equivalents of 1,579,000, which is down from the prior year, 1.8 billion. You're looking at total liabilities of 35,000, and total fund balances of 1.5 billion. So what you're looking at there is you have an unassigned fund balance in the general fund of 246,000, committed, which is for capital projects mostly, of 828,000, and restricted, which is motor fuel money, and a couple other earmarked funds and interest, that type of thing, of 469,000. The reconciliation at the bottom of the page is then a component that shows the amounts reported on the statement net position, how they differ from the statement. So as we discussed from that question that arose, the capital assets there are 15 million, and the liabilities, including the capital debt obligations of 1.2 million, and that's how those tie back. We have statement D, which is the statement of revenues received, expenditures dispersed, and the changes in fund balances. Again, we're going to focus on the total columns to your right, total revenues at 5.2 million, down from 6.8 million last year, that was the grant received last year versus in '15. We have the expenditures dispersed were also decreased from 6.7 million to 6 million. We had a total decrease in your fund balance, so meaning that you had more expenditures than revenue of 344,000. Different transfers, bond issuance, or bond proceeds, netting at 99,000, for a total ending fund balance of 1.5 billion. And again, a required component of our recording is this reconciliation at the bottom of the page to the statement of activities, showing the different debts, principal, capital asset purchases, depreciation expense. Statement E is your statement of fund net position, so this focuses strictly on business-type activities, meaning the water sewer funds. Your total assets decreased from 21.8 million in '14 to 21.5 million in '15. Total liabilities, down from 11.7 million to 11 million, and total net position increased to about 330,000 to 10,446,000. Statement F is your revenues, expenses, and changes in fund position, again, this focuses on your proprietary funds, the water sewer, total revenues increased up to 3.4 million, total expenses increased to 2.9 million. Total operating incomes at 509,000 this year, we had total non-operating expenses of 249,000, transfers in of 259,000, capital contributions there, which is a transfer in of 70,483, for a total increase in that position of 330,000. Statement G is just a required statement of cash flows, showing that the cash balance at the end of the year for the proprietary funds was at 1.3 million. And statement H is the fiduciary net position, meaning these are the funds that are not actually funds of the city. These are funds that you're holding in trust, the police pension at 4.3 million, and the different agency funds through the police department at 76,000. Page 12 is a statement of changes in fiduciary net position, so this is basically the pension, police pension fund, and there is a separate audit performed, and these are just disclosed, these citywide statements. The next section is the notes to financial statements. I will only touch base on what I feel is significant in these notes. We're starting on page 13 with note one, which is the summary of significant accounting policies. The highlight here is that there are no changes from the previous year. They're still at the on-maintain track basis, and there's no change in the current year presentation. Note two, the highlight here is that you're fully liberalized, anything that's over the SBIC limit, 250,000 per bank, is fully liberalized by security cell to remain in the city. Capital assets, note five, is just showing the depreciation expense that we allocated, like we talked about with the different large statements, with the inclusion of the assets in depreciation. So you're looking at total governmental fund net assets of 15 million, and total business-type assets of 92.8 billion. Note six is a very detailed note about the different long-term debt obligations of the city. You're looking at total long-term obligations of 12.3 million, with 970,000 due within one year. The rest of the note disclosures are just required, we're looking at some retirement fund, IMRF information that's required to be disclosed here in the notes, the police pension have included the required component there, based on what's come out of pension fund audit. And other than that, there is no significant notes or changes that I feel we need to discuss at this time. With that being said, we're going to go ahead and look at the funds, we start in the other information section on page 35. General fund is looking at total assets of 288,000, we have zoning deposit at 3,000, for an ending fund balance of 285,000. In total, in the general fund, we had an increase here from prior year revenues received of 4.6 million, but in line with where we expected, and we had total expenditures dispersed under budget at 4.5 billion, for a total increase in this fund of $9,742. The motor fuel tax fund is on page 37, we have cash and bank, and a total restricted fund balance for those projects of 263,000. The next page, 38, is the capital projects fund, this is again a committed fund balance for the projects that have been committed to, of 745,000. Total revenues received, we're at 244,000, total expenditures dispersed on different projects are at 635,000, we had a decrease in this fund over the previous year, 358,000. The bond and interest fund is sitting at a fund balance of 105,000, with cash and bank 137,000. We had the revenues received, mostly being tax levy, of 177,000, the principal and interest payments at 320, for a total decrease in the fund balance of 6,743. Pages 40 and 41 are just required reporting for IMRF and its pension information. Page 42 is the notes to other information, the highlight here is there was no issues where there was any funds on the budget. It is nice to see that the budget is becoming more in line with expenditures, and that we see definitely an improvement in spending here in the line items that they are in, so I think the reporting has become a lot more meaningful. Then, we're looking at the supplemental information, what's included in this section is the non-major funds of the city. We're looking at total special revenue funds, I'm going to go ahead and skip the total pages and go fund by fund, starting at page 45 with the Edsler funds. We have total assets, cash and bank of 39,000, restricted fund balance of the same. The revenues received are right in line with expectations at 55,000, expenditures dispersed at 34,000, for an increase in this fund balance of 22,000. Mobile equipment fund on page 46 has the fund balance of 97,694, we had a decrease in this fund of 82,741 from prior year. The Ridgeport Tiff number two fund, assets of 7,210, that increased by the property tax, or, I'm sorry, the Tiff revenue, the interest income. And then we have Schedule B1, which is more detail of each water operations, sewer funds, all the proprietaries are here. The total water operations fund has the cash and bank receivables and total assets, again, this is on the equal basis when it comes to the proprietary funds, because you do have your assets and how much you pull for the water amounts due. So you have total liabilities and net position there at 5.3 billion, and net position available for use of 4.8, 4.9 million, excuse me. The water operations fund on page 49 is your revenues, expenses, we have the total revenues received of 1.4 million, expenses, nothing out of the ordinary or out of line to the budget, looking there, total expenses of 1,527,000, looking at a total increase in the fund there of 33,000 after transfers in and contributing capital. Water capital projects on page 51, we have total assets of 367,000, revenues at 117,000, expenses at 248,000, decrease in this fund overall of 107,000. Sewer operations have total assets, including the capital assets and receivables of 15.5 million, liabilities there at 10.6 million, for a total net position available of 4.8 million. Sewer operations fund, expenses, revenues, and changes in net position are on the next page, total revenues increase as anticipated at 1.9 million, we had expenditures under budget at 1.5 million, for total increase in this fund of 424,000 for the year. The final fund in the proprietary funds of the sewer capital projects, with a restricted net position of 355,000, total revenues of 7,856, expenses under budget, well-under budget of 71,000, for a total decrease in this fund of 18,000 for the year. Page 55 is your agency funds, again, this means the funds that are not available for use of the city, these are mostly the billing fund, the billing fund, and then the different police, the netting funds here. At the end of the day, the total cash balance in those funds are 76,000. The next section, I won't go into any detail, as there are no surprises here, or anything that I feel needs to be highlighted. This is the general fund in detail, line by line, function by function. That goes through page 60. Page 61, Schedule 2, is just a supplementary schedule, showing your assessed notation, how it's, where it's been, how it's decreasing, what your rates are at in the extensions. Page 62 is legal debt margin, your well within the margin, there's no reason for concern there. And page 63 and 64 is a required component of our report, where we issue an opinion on the internal controls of the city, and again, you know, kept it report that we found no issues here, we have proper segregation duties, and financial oversight is excellent here. I'd like to go ahead and open up to any questions that anyone may have regarding our audit process, or anything contained in the report. It's a lot, so I try to not.
Do you practice before you come out?
I do that. I do a lot of these. But any questions anyone has regarding our audit, or any procedures, or?
Good job as usual, good job, Mrs. Lady, you guys did well, Kim, yeah.
Absolutely.
She stays on top of us.
Absolutely.
That makes her job.
Definitely, it's definitely clear to see, as, you know, we've been audited here for a lengthy period of time at this point, so, you know, we've been able to see the progress that has happened, so we're very happy to see that. There's always more efficiencies being found, the budgeting process is becoming really tightened up, everyone's to see that, so we've been very happy with getting a recording timely, and anything we need, obviously, is right there for us, explanation every time. So it's been a pleasure working with Kim and her staff.
Good job.
All right, thank you, if anyone gets any other questions in the meantime, feel free to give us a call, our numbers in one. Thank you, have a good day.
All right, moving along, Sherri Michaels, you have a presentation proposal.
Yeah. First of all, our next meeting will be next Monday, October 12th, at 6 o'clock, at the Park District office. It is a potluck dinner and anniversary celebration, we will talk about the past and plan for the future. All of you are most welcome to attend, and chief, any of the police officers that are on duty, have a feel free to come and get a bite to eat. Last week's bachelor training had 15 servers, special thanks to Officer Rhonda Thomas, Lee Rupus from the Illinois Liquor Commission, and Leader Yountler Coalition, and we'll also have activities for the school hike, October 17th, 3:30 to 7:30.
All right, any citizens coming tonight? Flattening Building Commission, their next scheduled meeting is Thursday, November 5th, 2015, at 3:00 plus PM. Do know before we begin the committee reports, the line item under city administration report was entered in error, it's actually supposed to be under building and grounds report, so everybody can leave that. Beginning committee reports, which will begin now, so building grounds, parks, health, and safety, Alderman Persson, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the true north of asbestos abatement and consulting services proposal, and the amount not to exceed $8,700 for the properties located at 113 and 117 Bridge Street.
Motion by Alderman Van Dyne, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Persson, any discussion?
Just a question, the rest on what we're looking at here?
Yeah, that was.
Is it done or taken?
No, that's not taken on that. These are, these are the actual houses that were put, and then, that's why the bullshit record is. It's basically the homes operated straight, everybody knows. We have spoken with local authorities, generally agree down with their system, so this is just part of the process.
Correct, we need to do a notice of 10 days for the IUPA, it was having asbestos exposure, it's filed there, we did the asbestos abatement survey, and so they cleaned the windows, the glazing was filed, and the middle house, and there are also a lot of piping that went on those houses. So the IUPA required, before we could demo it, we have to put a notice out for 10 business days, and then after we do the abatement, we have to do a notice that we're doing a demolition. So to make the tiny work, if you go with 150 in the first weekend in November, we need to have this all done, you know, before they have the flood, and then local 150 will come in and tear down all three buildings, a lot of garages. And we're still working on trying to find someone help us with bringing a bomber truck, local 150 doesn't want to use our small trucks, because they want to be able to do it in one day. So we're going to be reaching out to a couple of the companies, I know Colby's made some calls, sees if we can maybe get a truck to take that day, get all over to Lakeview.
Tony, I noticed in the proposal, there was a credit available for supplying water, electric, for supplying water, electric.
Yes, they were spraying out for it, so we won't be able to get a credit that day.
Further discussion? Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Persson?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
And he adds that much of the credit for the electric, one of our generators, what we provide for. Small credit.
The next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, October 14th, 2015, at 6:30 PM. Water sewer streets and alleys committee, Alderman Studer, Alderman Kerwin.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve payment request number two to Austin Tyler Construction Incorporated, any amount of $167,948.48 for the Route 53 water main replacement project.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, we have a second. Second by Alderman Persson, any discussion?
How's that fall in line with what you was considering, I understand?
All right, the change order, there's no change orders, this is just.
This is one of the straight payouts.
No straight payments paid.
All the payroll, certifications, everything, so. The next one you receive will have a few of the change orders for the pavement, because remember, we're trying to stay in the parkway, you know, going to the pavement, there'll be a few change orders there, when you want to be gone, but then there's probably going to be additional dollars for the pavement.
As we get those change orders in, correct, hopefully, we have a legitimate, appropriate event, committee meeting, but also that there, next council meeting, we'll have some discussion in case of any issues.
And they affect our financing, the loan changes, reflect that, the change.
At the, at the end of the day, we're still looking at somewhere probably around 18,000 dollars for the, we're, we still have that cushion in the loan for contingency, but the bad end quarter, about 18,000 dollars right now.
Further discussion? No call both. Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persson?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
The next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, October 14th, at 5:30 PM.
Police and Asda, Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, October 13th, 2015, at 5:30 PM.
Finance Administration and Lightback, Alderman Tudor, Alderman Studer.
I move to approve the accounts payable report in the amount of $461,910.88, as presented by the city account.
Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? No call both, please. Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Persson?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I move to accept the fiscal year 2015 financial audit as presented by Mac and Associates.
Motion by Alderman Studer, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Van Dyne, any discussion? No call both, please. Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Persson?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, October 20th, at 6:00 PM.
Orders, license, Alderman Hall, Alderman Evans. First, I'd like to pardon me, we have a second discussion, and first, help. City Minister, we're.
Yeah, I think Kobe wanted me to let you know that Route 53 Water Main Project, tomorrow, Austin Tyler, will be getting care of the paving areas, they'll be bringing it out and coming back, maybe savings should be done with all of the body, but the day tomorrow. What he did meet with them today, he did explain to them about the water hearts, still going at a higher level, trying to get that done if they could by noon or one o'clock, so if you don't have any traffic issue down here. We'll definitely see some lane closures tomorrow with fighters in the morning. They asked to start up at First Street, over west, instead of that river. Hopefully, it'll be done in one day, and that does be good. The bid did come in on the motor field tax, Kobe's doing everything in regards, came in pretty good, we're looking at 200, around 280,000, probably a little bit, or going through it now, and we do have the funds for that project to look forward. K O is a little bit high, so hope it's good, so look at that, see what K O will pitch, work-wise, keeping disparity and a couple, but that was an ultimate, so. They'll come to Los Angeles report, and then hopefully, 20th, we'll be able to have a contract, they're going to prove, if we're weather holes, like it says it's going to do, and they're in great shape, because we're really ahead of the game, a week and a half, so we should get the motor field tax, all the roads done, and, you know, after, right now, we'll be doing it after Halloween, so that kind of, 20th, roads, we had tore up like we did last year, during the holiday time, something hits that. It's on a Saturday, we're all good, well, we should be all good this year. And you know, I think, you know, I was out of town for the weekend, but I heard that the Stanley Cup, well, you guys went very well, the mayor played very good. I know the police department, fire department, very, you know, on preparation, even though you didn't have it where they had, 5,000 people show up, but you never know, Stanley Cup.
It was very impressive, and I missed it, I heard a lot about that, a lot of, I mean, actually, police department, fire department, now, they're exceptional, now, keeping everything under wraps, being a little bit low, if you will. And actually, I, police department, fire department, they're all there in potential, now, keeping everything under wraps, being a little bit, well... They've got them all in there to take their pictures, so, thank God the bad people didn't know they were all there at the same time.
Protect the cup! And then the only other event that's coming up is there's a wine and water event, uh, out at, uh, Pritchman, uh, on sixty-six, on, uh, October seventeenth. So we don't want to start for any tickets, through Rotary, downtown, uh, the wine, wine and water event, uh, down in our area. I like the white taste, great event, folks.
Attorney's report, Mister Ervin.
Thank you. The last two weeks I've worked on getting to property owners in the, uh, industrial parks to, uh, comply, or, and taking the steps to get them compliance and the ordinances in regards to, uh, paving their apartment lot. And the city, uh, or the county tax agent, uh, did fortunately last week, uh, petition for the appointment of a receiver for a mayor confirmation under the statute if there's, uh, taxes that haven't paid on it. Uh, the holder of the tax certificate, in this case, the county, for this tax agent, came petition to court for the appointment of a receiver when a city has filed a, an ordinance violation charge against the, uh, property. So I'm, uh, in the process of following this report, I've noticed it up for a week, Friday, October sixteen. So if the court agrees with petition, anticipate getting an order that will allow the city to, um, start having the property provided with the city's ordinances, so we can start, uh, bring that into compliance, and that will be hopefully starting a week from Friday. Now, the statute allows any loss of the city occurs as a result of that to apply to the property, which will be have to be paid. The property is often to be used for the tax, so...
I need motion to go into executive session.
Mister Mayor, I move to go into executive session at seven thirty-three for the following matters of personnel.
Motion by Alderman Halsey, we have a second. Second, Detective Alderman Kerwin, go call both, please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
All right, any questions? Mister Mayor, I move to call the executive session at seven fifty-two. Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, we have a second. By Alderman, have any, go call both, please.
Um, Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman, uh, Stuter? Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Thank you, uh, no action to be taken following executive session. Before we adjourn real quick, I forgot something. The visiting boosters did send us a thank you to the city Wilmington for their, for assisting them with the online marching band that we had on September eleventh, so...
That's great.
Oh, that's all right, too bad I wasn't here, I was at the last one, I could only imagine, I just seen all the videos. Did you start in eleven?
Oh, I didn't. I would have to have a time for the next year. He's doing stuff without my permission.
Yeah, well... Saying that, motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
Second, favor.